Everyone ready? Okay, good afternoon ladies and gentlemen. I would like to start this off by my rendition of Jailhouse Rock since that's why we're all here, but Elvis Presley Enterprises did not get back to me in time to use the rights. So, instead, we're just going to get right into it. We have called this meeting today because once again, the potential jail location of 1901 East Grand Boulevard, which is right on the outskirts of Dell City, is once again back on the county commissioners list as a potential site to be voted on tomorrow. So, in addition to coming here today as a call of action, this is to let everyone know that once again, we need all hands on deck tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. at the county commissioners meeting. The address is 320 Robert S. Kerr, second floor, in the Board of County Commissioners Chamber. That is the item one. And item two, the big reason why I want to make sure everyone knows why we're here is there is a lot of rumors, there is a lot of gossip, and there is a whole lot of unknown. Our goal today is for us to tell you what we know, tell you what we don't know, and to make sure that you all know exactly what the city of Dell City is doing to fight for our 21,822 citizens as we oppose this jail location. So, this has never happened before with Dell City, so I do want to set a few ground rules. We are on Facebook Live as well as on Cox Channel 20. So, I do want to let everyone know that everything being live and everything is trying to be censored, so we want to make sure that every comment that we have is kept civil. I have multiple people here to keep me civil because this is a very passionate issue that we're all having, but I do want to let everyone know that this is how we're going to go forward. If you have questions, if you have comments or anything, this is an open forum. With me, besides myself, J.D. Hawk, the city manager of Dell City, I have our vice mayor and councilwoman for Ward 2 Pamela Finch, and I have the Ward 3 councilwoman Claudia Brown. I do want to start off by issuing apologies from Mayor Easton. He is out of town and could not get here quick enough, but he wants to let everyone know that he is with us and speak it, and then he will be working diligently tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. about this issue. So, to start things off, as I said, tomorrow they have another executive session putting 1901 East Grand on the list, and that is something that we have adamantly opposed. We have worked for weeks and weeks about this. I want to start off, the school board member Gina Standridge is here. She and Dr. Rick Cobb have worked diligently since September when it was on a list of 20, 30 different places. We were advised, that's not anything to have to worry about now, site selection is a far time away. As soon as those sites started dwindling, Gina and Dr. Cobb called us and said, "You have got to get on this," and we have jumped on it headfirst, and we have been at every county commissioner meeting that we were supposed to be at since to openly oppose what's going on. And the issues that we're having is, it feels like we don't, no one knows what's happening, and no one knows how the process or anything is starting to work. So, when I was told that it's once again on the agenda for tomorrow, it is the only agenda item in executive session aside from the removal of the potential site in the stockyards. So, instead of having three, four, five locations to discuss, they have ours, which is a potential action, and we have one to remove from another area. So, when we're down to one, this is where we are. I hope this press conference and this discussion is premature, I really do, but at this point, because of all the back and forth that's happened, we can't run the risk of waiting a week, we can't run the risk of seeing how it turns out, we can't run the risk of not showing up en masse every chance that we get. So, at this point, this is our call to action for 9 o'clock tomorrow. So, to shoot things off, one of the things I want to tell you is, I am incredibly proud of Dell City. Everything that we have done in the past year and in the past three years has been incredible. We are on a sign of growth right now. We have completed a 20-year comprehensive plan. We have invested over $200,000 in getting that plan started. We have money going into economic development over a million dollars. We've invested over a million dollars into our police department so that we can work on reducing crime rates and enhancing the safety and security of our citizens. We have done phenomenally in our human resources department by closing off positions that had been open for years, and we are down to a bare minimum. We're at a low turnover, we're actually paying proper wages, we are getting things that need to be. Our fire department is as strong as it's ever been. Our community development department is constantly working on cleaning our parks and our public areas to make things better. Our public works department is constantly addressing infrastructure issues. Everything has been going great. I cannot say enough things about how wonderful our staff and everyone has been, the citizens included, our city council included. We are working our tails off to make this a great city. It's already great, we're going to make it greater, and I very much appreciate everyone for doing that. And that's why this is such a cause for concern. We have let everybody in the county know what we're doing. If you have not seen the letter that we have addressed back from December, I penned a letter to each one of the county commissioners that explained in detail what each department, how it would suffer if this jail were to come right next door to us. All of our economic development could be in jeopardy, all of our future community projects could be in jeopardy. The level of manpower that we have for police and fire will not be adequate enough to handle the influx of transients that may come in, the vandalism that may come in. There's so many unknowns. We have let them know, and then they have taken this side off the list. So, we thought, great, that's wonderful. A week later, I get a call from school board member Standridge, and once again, it's back. So, we come back in there, we talk about it, we add some new items to why this is going to be a problem. Two weeks later, we're back again. And now, here we are, two weeks later again, back again. So, we don't know what is going on at this point, but just talking about the detriments it has to Dell City is no longer enough. So, now, we're going to have to go a little bit more on the offensive side of things and start saying, hey, something is not happening, something is not making sense to all of us. I want to tell you all, with Oklahoma County, we have incredible partnerships with Oklahoma County. Their emergency management division has worked incredibly well with our fire department for years. Their district superintendent works alongside our public works department, and they provide phenomenal work on our roads and bridges anytime that we need it. They provide us great prices and everything else to take care of it and to be good stewards of our tax dollars. The Shine Program that we're using for beautification has been a wonderful asset for us to be able to point them in a direction and say, hey, we need this area cleaned up, and they take care of it. Those are just some of the examples. The county sheriff's office has been working with our police department for the past few years, more connection and mutual aid agreements than we've ever had in the past. Those are wonderful things with our county. We are very, very appreciative of what the county does for Dell City, and that's once again, why this is not making sense. We are at the point now where there's not transparency, there's not accountability. I've been working in the government since I was 22 years old. There were always rules and regulations that you have to follow. Those of you long-term government folks know the same thing. Nothing happens overnight, nothing happens quickly, as much as we'd like it to. So, we do not know what is happening in this site, why it keeps on coming back. And that is something that I am asking everyone to please, write to your county commissioners, come to the event tomorrow, come to their meeting tomorrow, and ask them, what makes this site so viable? They've had over 10 sites that they have released over the past three months, four months, none of them keep reappearing, it's just ours. It's as though there's something we're missing, and I'm not sure what it is. I do want to give a shout out Commissioner Mon. Every conversation that we've had with Commissioner Mon through our city council members or anyone that has communicated with him, he has gotten back to them. He has tried to give us information, so I do appreciate the transparency that he's trying to have. Commissioner Blumer has worked with a few of our members, and she's tried to provide insight, she's tried to provide information about what's going on in the limited capacity that they can share. We have not yet heard from Commissioner Davidson, but we are hopeful he is going to be as transparent also. But every time we hear a story, every time we hear that we think we know what's going on, another story takes its place, another issue takes its place, another concern takes its place. And so, that is what I want to get to. My whole goal today is to continue to demystify government. Your city government is not a secret. If you want to know what we're doing, come ask. That is something that every department head will tell you, my city council will tell you, I will tell you. We would like the same thing from the county commissioners, we'd like the same thing from the county. Tell us what's going on. We have been told that they have approached multiple people and had conversations, one on one, one on two, whatever that may look like. They have never come to Dell City. The last conversation we had was when our county commissioner was doing her tour, and she came in and spoke with us, with our county, with our city council, with my staff, and with myself. We all had a conversation with her, and the only conversation about this jail location was that it would be detrimental. And that was it, there was no more communication. Brittany, please correct me if I'm wrong, is there anything I'm missing on that communication we had with her? So, we didn't think a lot of it, we thought this was just one of many sites that were selected or potentially selected, and that they would fall off the list in time, and now that's not the case. Now, this is getting very, very close. The one thing I want to tell you is, fear is a factor in all of this. We have had citizens approach our city council, we have had them approach the department heads, we've had them approach me. Fear of the unknown is a very big deal right now, and that is something that we're trying to get to the bottom of. There has been no one to mitigate our fears or to alleviate any of the issues that may be coming up. We haven't had anyone come to us and say, "This site is viable because of A, B, and C." We understand that you're worried about X, Y, and Z, so how can we help you get there? How can we help you alleviate X, Y, and Z? It's going to be very hard, oh, yes sir. Absolutely. So, one of the things that we have noticed in this fear is, this bucks up right to our residential neighborhood. Pam Finch is the Ward 2 councilwoman, this bucks right up to her area. This is something that we don't understand. No other site that they've shown us bucks up to a residential area. It is so close to Crooked Oak Public Schools, it is so close to Effeli Heights Elementary, it is so close to daycare centers, it's close to an animal welfare center, it's close to a cerebral palsy center, I just heard today that I was unaware of there too. It is so close and in such a weird location, why is that the most viable? We've not been told. The price isn't the cheapest. We know as folks that have to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, that you have to find the lowest, most responsible bid whenever we're going out and doing something, and that's very hard and it's very tough because this is a $5 million site, there were 1.5 million offers on the table. I get that it's not the lowest, but most responsible being $4 million more, that's something that we don't understand. The county commissioners have mentioned, price has not been a factor into why this has been removed, ever. So, with that being the case, that it's not been a factor, why does it keep coming back? We were told it comes back every time there's a price reduction they're required to. So, out of all 10 or 15 sites that are on the list, the only one that comes back at a lower cost is ours? I don't know. And that's the thing, if we could find out that information. We had this site added back on there, and now that it's one of the only on the executive session, that causes us a lot of concern. Every commissioner has voted this off at least once, so we know it's not their selected site, it's not what they've chosen, we hope, we don't believe, but then actions speak louder than words when it pops back up a week later. I thought it was a funny joke, Councilman Dean told them last time, "I'll see you all next week," and we're going, "Oh, that's funny." No, here we are again, next week, it's another issue. Yes ma'am?
Was not from a lower price. It was from a commissioner who missed the meeting where we were taken off, he comes back into town and says, "Oh, I want to reconsider it." So, his one voice outweighed two other voices that took us off. How is that fair? How is that government?
That is a question I have. We have rules of what makes it onto an agenda for a public meeting. For them, any commissioner can add any item that they want at any given time as long as it's published within the timeframe. So, here's my question, this site has gotten re-added, but no commissioners have re-added any other sites recently. What is that about? If we can reopen multiple sites, then why if a site has been voted off that you know you want in more of a location, why would that commissioner have not placed it back on? And the thing is, we're not trying to attack, we're not trying to argue, and we're certainly not trying to fight, we're trying to get to an understanding, we're trying to make sure that this stuff is accountable, it is transparent, and it is in the best interest of Oklahoma County. All 21,822 of us are residents of Oklahoma County, our voices need to be heard as well. So, we're starting with this today, we're hoping to go into it tomorrow, and they've already mentioned, we don't think there's going to be a vote tomorrow, we think it's just going to be a chance to get back and discuss the site in more depth. Even so, we cannot run that risk.
J.D., I'd like to chime in for a moment and continue to discuss that site, because I believe that there's a narrative out there that is making people feel like this is an industrial area, and that there's nothing around that. It's just an industrial area in Oklahoma City's eyes, but they're not noticing or recognizing or even seeing Dell City. And I'm going to continue to say it, I feel like we are just the armpit of Oklahoma City, and I don't think that they are paying attention to our small community. They want to have the narrative that we are just, that that is just a place that nobody's there, nobody cares. Well, we care. And I think right now, again, I really feel we're getting the short end of the stick right now. They're willing to take off cattle, the stockyards, bless them, but it makes me think that maybe cattle's a little bit more important than my community. You know, our kids, exactly, thank you, Ms. Gina Standridge, thank you, our children, our schools. Is that more important? And then, you know, they're dropping 40 million on a brand-new dog place, excuse me, animal welfare, which we need it. But at the same time, it's right here in our corner, and they think that that's more important than our students, our schools, and our community. That's not fair to me. To me, that just, it's almost a personal attack. I feel like we are getting treated as if we are not important to some people's eyes, and we may not be important to some of those really, really big pockets out there. You know, I have a feeling that the reason they don't want to consider staying in Oklahoma City is because they've already given out that land over there to some really, really great pockets, some really, really big dollars. Somebody already has sold that, and they don't care about our community, they're going to care about what is going to make Oklahoma City more tax dollars. And I would like to remind Oklahoma City, they're already thinking about they're going to need money for transportation wherever it goes, because they don't want it where it is now. They're going to have to find transportation, they're going to have to get new hubs, they're going to have to get a new police station, they're going to have to create all of those things. That is more money, more money. And where's it going to come from? Probably Oklahoma City's tax dollars, while the trash is going to get left right over here in our corner. We can't even get Oklahoma City to clean up some of their streets. What kind of partnership is that? And yes, J.D. has said, yes, you know, the county has been very gracious, la, 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 but you know what, these last couple of days? No, I haven't got a verbal call from my commissioner. I've texted, and I've called, and I love her, but I have yet to get a call from her. Why is that? Is there something going on? She is the only one that has promised that she would continue to vote it off. Is her voice being stopped? You know, I talked to a lot of other people that are saying, you know what, we're going to stay out of it. Who is silencing some people? And why? Why is this location the one? Why? We need to reconsider, we need to continue to press, and I'm sorry, I'll let somebody else speak, but I'm upset, and it's just, it's, I could go on. So Claudia, out of 621 square miles that Oklahoma City is in charge of, they have 621 square miles of land, and they have to back it up to Dell City. So, they're not going to take the full responsibility of that jail. They're not going to deal with our crime that comes out of the jail, the sexual predators, the people that will come in and rob our citizens. My community in Ward 2 is veterans, seniors, low income, people that are trying to start their families and get their footing, just starting to build their lives, and I feel like that we're going to stop it.
Property available, I mean, is somebody selling it? Is it eminent domain? Is it?
So, from what we have been told, they released a request for proposal that anyone could submit a site for potential location. They gave parameters that they wanted, 40 to 80 acres, it needed to be this, it needed to be this, and each person was able to submit their site. Hey, I've got 100 acres over here, I'll sell you, I've got 50 acres here, I'll sell you. And so, this site was offered to them by a company, and it made it onto their site potential list. It's been removed a few times, and whenever it gets removed, they come back and offer it a 5% discount. It is in the county's requirement to bring it back up for attention because they want to show that they're doing their due diligence if the price is dropping, but a 5% drop of a $5 million process is not, or a $5 million investment is not a big enough reason for people to jump in. There's multiple people that could be pushing it. Right now, they're saying that the potential salesperson is pushing it, but they're also looking at it very, very in-depth. Yes sir?
Yeah, I'm just curious, who is in favor of this? I bet you're.
I've not heard. All three county commissioners have openly voted no in at least one open session in the past 60 days. So, we're not sure who's in favor at all a sudden. Commissioner Davidson added it back onto the list two weeks ago, and he cited that he was on a plane, there were some concerns, it was a lot of, it didn't make a lot of sense, but you try to take people at their word, you try to take the elected official at their word, so I'm trying very hard to do that. And that is a question that we're going, okay, so it's back on the list, they could have voted it back off the list immediately, they didn't, it's still staying on there, and now it's once again, executive session. They've had multiple executive sessions about this. And that's where the concern is once again, is we're not sure why.
Well, and I'd just like to say too, that Ms. Brown, when you said they're not thinking about Dell City, I think you're wrong. I think they thought about it. They have decided and deemed that we are the most expendable. We can get rid of that seven and a half acres, they're not going to say anything. So, you know, our sister communities have come up at some point in time with the location. They barely even have to walk in that meeting, and they're taking off immediately. We're on, we're off, we're on, we're off, we're upon in the game, and we have been deemed expendable.
So, speaking of that, just as Councilman Brown mentioned, Commissioner Blumer has openly stated that she will continue to vote no on this, and I am holding her to her word as all of us should be, as her constituents, as she is our commissioner, and I do appreciate her open and honesty saying that I am going to continue to vote no. I really appreciate that. We need one more commissioner to be on our side with this situation, because when there's only three votes, it just takes two to make things happen, and that's something that's very difficult for us to look at. I want to bring in there though, when they talk about, we've asked for metrics, we've asked to find out why this location is what it is. I'll be delivering my letter to them tomorrow morning in person, just to make sure that something didn't get lost in an email sent somewhere to an inbox or a junk box. We want to make absolutely certain that they know the request that we have. Oklahoma City, who is supposed to be permitting this, permitting the jail, their county, or their city council has openly stated, they would like to see metrics into every location being considered. I appreciate the fact that Oklahoma City is even asking for that, and so, we're asking for the same thing. Look at your metrics, find out what's going on, because right now, just like northeast Oklahoma City, they've joined together with us in this fight, because they said, "You have the same demographics we do, we're lower income." The area in Ward 2 that we have, those homes, when they put that jail in, their property values are going to go down, they're not going to go much lower because they're already the lowest in town. I don't like hearing that. Just as Gina Standridge has said, that home is somebody's mansion. Doesn't matter if it's 800 square feet or 8,000 square feet, that home is somebody's mansion, that is your home. We don't want to see property values go down, we don't want to see any potential problems go down with this. We have so many goals and so many plans for our areas everywhere, all seven and a half square miles in Dell City are going to be addressed in the next 20 years, we want to see that continue. It's going to be very difficult when there's a blight literally across the way, and is it because it's our demographic? Is it because the fact that we do have the smallest voice because we don't have the deepest pockets? We don't know. We're trying so hard when we're being on the offensive to not be offensive when we're on the offensive, because we don't want to burn the bridges that we have with these people that are supposed to work with us day in and day out to have to lose these partnerships, but there's too many unknowns. When there's an issue, we've had citizens that have requested town halls, we've had citizens, look what we're doing today, we put this together in six hours. I'm very appreciative of Brittany and the rest of the staff for being able to put this together so quickly, because we need people to know as soon as we knew. We found out at 8:00 this morning. One of, our fire chief is currently in training in a different city, and he sent it to me right at 8:00, "Have you seen the board agenda?" Because he's just as worried about it. He checks on it every day, all of us have been checking it every day, so there is no sneak attack. So, we know that it's back on again, we've got to come back with this again. So, the other thing that we want to talk about, we mentioned that this jail site is moving. We keep having questions, what about the current site? It's been there for years. They have the money, they have the ability to renovate it. Now, don't get me wrong, I've walked through it in my past, in the past jobs that I've had to work in, I've gotten to take a tour of the jail with the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office when they took me in, it scared the heck out of me. And boy, you talk about not wanting to be there for any other reason, that keeps you on the straight and narrow path, but they do have the money to renovate it, they do have the money to purchase area around it. Not one commissioner or no one has put that site on the selection list, it's always been remained off. We don't know why. Tell us why. If that's just it, yes sir? You're going like this, I figured this can't wait.
Oklahoma City, the Oklahoma City City Council, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Dunn, Joe Van Damme, and Mickey Neistat, all question, why is the current site not an option? Been asked by the county commissioners, by, as I said, why is this option not on the table? Do you want to talk to land acquisition around there? Is that fair with that option? I would question, why, have they given any explanation as to why that site is not plausible?
I want to, go ahead.
So, if you can't see me, so, it's Josh Schultz with the Dell City Chamber. There was a meeting requested to me that was presented as if it was coming from the county, and then, which seemed as an intentional try to division between the city and the chamber to get this on their side of putting the jail off at Trosper. The biggest concerns, obviously, was, I still express the concerns that many of us expressed at the county commissioners meeting. The reason that they took the stockyards off is they're worried about economic development because Fort Worth wants to take our cattle industry away from us and take it to Fort Worth, and they were afraid that if they put it there, that Fort Worth would have an ability to convince our cattle ranchers to come down to Fort Worth and go to the stockyards there. So, obviously, when we expressed that, we say, well, we're worried about economic development, at that meeting, we were told that that shouldn't be a concern because it wouldn't affect economic development in Dell City, but they're worried about it with the stockyards. On top of that, it seems to be an intentional, as we've seen, if you live anywhere near 44th Street, anything south of that is Oklahoma City. It has pushed on us consistently that the crime that happens past that is Dell City, and it is not. And some of the crime that does seep into Dell City tends to be residents from that south of 44th Street in Oklahoma City, and they haven't shown that they are not willing to do anything in there unless something extremely bad happens, which tends to be when someone from Dell City has to call the police and has to figure out what to do. And so, this is just a unfortunate situation that we have to find ourselves in on a consistent basis, and I think it goes back to, they don't care.
Brittany, over the last year, how hard the city has worked on building the comprehensive plan and the 20-year plan, what would this jail location burden our citizens with, and what could we potentially be missing out on?
So, a couple of things that are going to happen with the comprehensive plan. The one thing I will tell you in economic and community development is beg, borrow, and steal. We've all learned that, and we are going to steal the exact idea that they have for Lake Hefner in Oklahoma City, and we want to do the same thing with Eagle Lake. We purchased Eagle Lake in the year 2000 for the price of a million dollars, and we have yet to renovate it. We have already started, we've already put over $800,000 of changes into Eagle Lake in the past two years, and we want to see that area grow. We want to see you come out of Eagle Lake, and instead of having the industrial area, we want to see that turn into the restaurants and the nice places that you can go. So, when you're done with Bricktown, you have a place here, maybe Bricktown's your Friday, we'll let Eagle Lake be your Tuesday. We're all about trying to bring that in. In addition to just that being area, renovating 15th Street, we'd like to see new grocery stores, we'd like to see more places for you to bring your children, we want to see that area grow. And the biggest one is on 29th between Bryant and Sunny Lane, the area that you have, that big open area, we have developers interested in putting in large residential homes. The one thing that everyone has told me over and over again, you outgrow Dell City. You don't want to. I've been here 37 years, my parents taught me to love this town, but at some point, you're going to outgrow it because we don't have the housing stock. You can't raise five kids in 900 square feet. I know you can, we've all done it, but in a sense of, people want to see themselves grow, and they do, when they are able to grow, and you have to wait to be able to get a home that's a certain square footage in Dell City. The last major development that we had only took place because of the 1999 tornado. I never want to see that be a reason for economic or community growth in Dell City. It was a tragedy then, still a tragedy now. So, that we have developers that are interested saying, no, we will turn that area from Hartsdale all the way to 29th Street, we're going to build that into a large residential home area and be able to have people where they can grow into Dell City is a huge goal. to have people where they can grow into Dell City is a huge goal. We're not going to have somebody invest millions of dollars into renovating that property if the jail is within walking distance. And it will be within walking distance. We have fear for Everly Heights. We have no idea what would happen there. The things that they have not alleviated us on the side of fear is what happens if property values go down. Mid-Dell just passed a huge bond that goes on our property taxes. So, what happens when that bond should pay off this year or in a certain year and it takes even longer? That's less growth it's going to be able for Mid-Dell in the future. We have a bond that'll be coming up soon after our 2011 bond finally expires. How are we going to be able to do that? We don't want to have to have a 15-year bond instead of a 10-year bond. That puts us even further back if we're going to build up our areas. That can be very tough. And nobody has addressed that for us yet about property values. In addition to that, what is the crime rate going to look like? I don't have any ill will against those that are in the jail. Whatever they're in there for is their business. But if they leave, we're, you know, and they come into our town, you can't help but have some sort of an issue with that or a potential prejudice to that because they were just released from the detention center. They weren't there for fun. They didn't go there for the kicks and the giggles. They went there because an law enforcement person placed them there for a temporary period of time. So, that is a concern that we have. What happens when they start taking a walk down Fifteenth Street? What happens when the mom and pop shops can't keep up with it and they close their doors? The daycare centers, they don't want to have that because they don't want to have that type of fear. Or parents pull their, their kids out of there because of that type of fear? What happens whenever Everly Heights has to go on lockdown because there's going to be a breakout from the jail? I hope it's going to be more secure than the current one, but we've all heard of the breakouts that have happened in the jail currently. I don't want to see Everly Heights go on lockdown. I don't want to see us have to pull in every available resource to help defend our area. We're going to do it because our police department and our staff care deeply about the citizens. We're going to do everything in our power, but even that's going to exhaust our limited budgets and our limited capabilities.
Even the fact that in that neighborhood, if you haven't had a chance, just drive through that neighborhood. It's a good little neighborhood. There are children that play in those parks every day. They ride, they're not afraid to drive their bikes on any street. They're comfortable in that ward. They know what they can do and what they can't do. They are comfortable. What's that going to hap, what's going to happen? Those children are going to be stuck inside playing a video game. When we try and push our kids out to play outside, get some sunshine, some fresh air, reactivity. Is that what the ARPA funds were for? It was for us to get out and be healthy. And this ARPA fund is going to affect our children.
I think that's a great point because, you know, if, if, uh, Oklahoma City or, or anybody else would say that this would not jeopardize our economic, um, development, um, they're, they're absolutely wrong. Because Oklahoma City has funds. They have a huge, um, um, pocket that we do. We can't afford that. And I don't think that they're really thinking about that at all. Um, our resources will have to be used to take care of whatever leaps into our streets.
Claudia's brought up to me that at the jail now, there are schools, there are two schools down there now. That was their choice. They built there after. But also, they have the resources of the Oklahoma City Police Department down there. They have the resources of the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Association down there. They have that right there. We don't have a hundred policemen that will surround Dell City and keep us protected all the time. We have what, 42, 44, 43? That's what we have. But we're only 7.5 square miles. We don't have to have that. But they have the resources downtown to take care of that.
Like if you've known somebody that's been incarcerated, there's many times that that person that gets released in all the night with no transportation, no phone service, we don't have pay phones on the corner. We don't have public transportation in Dell City. So, that's another burden that our citizens are going to take on, uh, with this potential site.
And that's a question I'd like you all to ask tomorrow at nine o'clock if you can be there. Alleviate our fears, mitigate our concerns. If they would have come to us, and this is just the openness and transparency of government, if they came out and told us, this is our only location. Because who knows, the, you know, the yellow-spotted silverfish or whatever could be in location number two and it's protected by the EPA. We understand there's government things that we can't control. We get that. But we haven't had that. If they were to come to us and say, hey, we understand you have limited manpower in your police department. What if we put the Okla, or the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Substation right there on Bryant and Twenty Ninth? That would be a huge boon for us. That would be a great protection for us. That would be something that would further our partnerships. Things like that weren't offered. We've had, we've been told that there are these backdoor meetings that are going on with certain people and offers are being made. They haven't communicated with us. They haven't contacted us. And their answer is, well, it's still too premature. Evidently not if they've met with other people. And that's what I'm having the problem with. But it's so hard to say that in a delicate and friendly manner, trying to say, hey, in the spirit of transparency, can you give us a little more without starting to take it personally at this point? Because that's, it seems like it's missing us, if anything.
We have three questions that have come up from the Facebook Live. The first one is, can you speak to Crooked Oak Schools and what role they've played in the opposition?
I ca, I can.
Waiting for the body. I was like, I was waiting for that one because that's going to get political.
Yes, yes. No, um, I can. And I, uh, have kept good, um, uh, relationships and good conversations with, um, the superintendent at Crooked Oak. Um, and, you know, they've been there. They, they are not happy with that site selection. They just passed their bond. They're building a brand-new, um, uh, athletic facility over there. They, they don't want it. They don't want it there any more than we do. And what I think that people are going to try to do is, I think they're going to try to pin us against each other. And, and that's not right. Uh, but yes, I do, I do know that, uh, Crooked Oak, um, is involved and does not appreciate, uh, um, that, that area.
Thank you, Councilwoman. There's a lot of perception that this could be a positive thing by producing jobs and more law enforcement in the area. Can you speak to that and clarify the reality of the situation?
The jail has been underfunded and undermanned for how many years? The money is going into the building. How is it going into the manpower? We don't have any answer to that yet. They've turned it over to the jail trust. I have not seen anything change. We have not seen this. The jail is still in the news. There's still concerns. There's still problems. Now, do not get me wrong. I hope it is a developer where we have, you know, 400 jobs available. That would be wonderful for that. Is this the area with the lowest unemployment or the highest unemployment rate? I haven't seen that number. We get demographics every week, myself and my economic developer. We get demographics every week. We've never been told we're high on the unemployment line. So, why would that be effective here where it wouldn't be more effective in an area where the unemployment is high, where you can bring these people in? So, as for bringing in additional, uh, law enforcement in the area, there's law enforcement next door to the jail that there is now, run by Oklahoma City. The only thing in that area, I believe the closest police station is Eighty-Ninth and Santa Fe. I've not seen anything coming closer. We do have a, a fire department that's there off of Eastern and Twenty Ninth. Is that right, Chief Williams? So, that is there for them. But I don't recall seeing police officers hanging out there or have any type of connection there. We've not seen any future plans for a substation anywhere close to there. There's been nothing to alleviate our fear, to feel like any of that will be mitigated.
On the Bryant area between Fifteenth and Twenty Ninth?
Nothing.
Nothing. There is one site with less than an acre that you might be able to tear down an old home and put something there. But no, there is no room for commercial development.
So, where would all this commercial development be happening then?
Not something we can answer. Not something we've heard.
So, if we think about the one square or the one mile radius around the jail, half of that footprint is in Dell City.
Mm-hmm.
So, we've heard talk about two schools being close to this, the current jail. Does it surprise you to know that both of those schools are charter schools? John Rex and Grind Prep? And does it surprise you to know that most of the kids who attend a charter school? We have a member of the school. Most of the kids that go to Everly Heights, do they ride a bus?
No, they walk through the neighborhood. They walk to where they are going. They're on, most of them are on free and reduced lunch as well.
So, they're going to be walking from neighborhood where we have people folks who are released who have no place to go. They have no public transportation. And we have kids who are going to be walking to school. It's not just kids who are being forced to be stuck in their homes because they can't leave. They have to leave to go to school. And we have folks who are going to be hanging out on the playgrounds and hanging out on the streets. Is that a safe environment for our kids?
And how does that look on the city whenever we do have these issues? If these issues were to come up? I keep trying to use if. I keep trying to make it as, as neutral as possible. But if these issues come up, how do you think we're going to feel as your city leadership to tell you, I'm sorry, we can't afford your student safety and security? That is not something I ever want to tell anyone. Because we try. We put money into it. As I've said, we've already invested a great deal into our police department. We're wanting to continue to do that. But if economic development goes down, sales tax goes down, we thrive on sales tax. That's how we make the majority of our money in this town. So, if our sales tax goes down, we're not going to be able to sustain what we're already doing, let alone add more.
Back to bringing jobs to the area. Do the people think that bringing a jail, they've already got people employed there. They're not going to get rid of those people to hire our people.
And I'd like to ask those employees if they think that they're getting paid well right now. And they probably not.
I've never heard, come to the jail, we pay well. I've never, I mean, chief, have I, am I missing something? Okay. Something could have changed, not that I've seen.
Is there any barrier that prevents Dell City folks today from going to work at the jail?
No.
So, this notion that we're going to build a jail here, here and all of a sudden it's going to be this cash register ringer for Dell City is false, correct?
Correct.
So, in terms of protecting the citizen for Dell City, since the footprint, half this foot. The chief of police right now. Assume we're going to have to add, say, four to five on shifts. We're going to need multiple shifts to protect the folks in that, in that neighborhood. We're talking, say, four shifts of five people, 20 new police officers. Assuming we can find them, we're going to have to cover the cost of new, new equipment for them. We're talking about.
Vehicle.
How much are we talking about there, chief? Two million dollars? Three million dollars?
The average officer right now that I'm looking into for this current budget, an entry level right out of the academy beginner, when you outfit them and everything you do, is at least $88,000 a person, at least.
I don't think we want adjunct police officers roaming around trying to protect our kids, do we?
No.
And you've got to also remember, when we talk about law enforcement and law enforcement presence, that would be around if this jail was located here. Uh, I did some work before I came to Dell City many years ago as the Oklahoma County Reserves. One of their tasks there was to take the reserves that are working for free. And they bring them down there to the jail to provide security in and around the jail, roving around the jail. When the Oklahoma County, uh, jail trust kicked out the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department has nothing to do with the jail now. They don't provide security. They don't do anything down there. Oklahoma City has offices inside where they have their own personnel officers, bring them their people in and they use their people there. They're not doing anything to run the jail. Oklahoma County Sheriff's has nothing to do with the security and the running of that jail. It is run by the jail trust. They are not law enforcement officers. It would be the same way here. They would put the jail here. If they do, there would be no law enforcement presence with the jail if it's run by the jail trust. So, they don't care when it walks out that door of who and what and the resources. Uh, take any night and go down there and just observe outside the county jail. You're going to watch them walk out of there all night long, mostly after midnight. And they walk in downtown Oklahoma City somewhere. And Oklahoma City police have to deal with them on a daily basis. We're going to be in that spot if that happens. So, what happens then, Mr. City Manager, if Dell City is forced to raise taxes another $10 million or $3 million? Do we have the tax base to do that?
We do not. We are already, we're at a 4.5% sales tax for our city. And that's about the highest that we can do. Anything additional to that, that's one of the reasons why we got out of the RTA because there was a potential sales tax increase on the horizon with the Regional Transit Authority. Our citizens would not be able to handle that, even those that are coming in and out. Our goal, if you all know, Dell City swells up to 90,000 people. We're at 21,000. We swell up to up to 90,000 people a day just because of I-40 passing through us, people stopping in, eating at our restaurant, shopping at our Walmart. People aren't going to do that when your sales tax goes even higher. They'll stay in Oklahoma City where it's 8.375 or whatever the number is. Instead of right now, we're at nine. They could potentially go to 10, 11, 12%. That can't be done. It's not something that we can afford.
So, you're saying an additional 2 cent sales tax would not be a great economic boon for this district?
Not at all.
This whole thing is just crazy. The reality is, the existing jail was built in 1991, opened up in 1991. It's been there 32 years. And if you think about how Oklahoma City has changed over that 32-year period, right? Now, think about where we'll be in 30 years from now. We're talking about 2050, 2055, right? A million dollars in cost, if they, wherever they. Process, if you look across the entirety of the. Six hundred and twenty-one square miles of Oklahoma City, not just the. Figure out what they, next jail, belong here.
So, a couple of other things to bring up is eminent domain. They've mentioned on multiple occasions, they do not want to do eminent domain. For those that know or do not know what that is, that is where the government can come in and take property through a judge. The judge ends up ruling in the favor of the government entity. And then you have to pay fair market value or whatever the judge deems worthy, which could be double, triple fair market value for the property in question. There are so many options that you can do with an eminent domain. Yes, I see that they want to have these people that are openly posting these things. But what we still don't understand is, okay, if you don't want to access the eminent domain issue, so you're going to put it here where it's going to affect our city. Oklahoma City has the power to bear the brunt of this. Oklahoma City's majority of their, the majority of the population of the jail comes from Oklahoma City, our biggest city. Dell City is also a customer of this jail. Do we not pay a very large amount of money when we have to put someone in the jail for one, two, week long, however that needs to be?
And so, that's the other part about too. Looking at it from the customer aspect, we're
not even being listened to here. We've spoken to the jail trust authority. They've said specifically, I, we've not had any say-so in the matter. We've contacted leadership in Oklahoma City and their law enforcement and other divisions. They go, we've had zero say-so in this. None of us have. So, then whenever we hear it from the political side of things, well, oh, no, that we talked to so-and-so, we talked to such-and-such. And then they're going, we don't know what the heck they're talking about. That's where this transparency is missing. I'm being good, Kelly. I see that smile. I'm being good. We don't know what's going on anymore, any more than anyone else does. And when we contact these people, Oklahoma City is our big brother. Midwest City is our big sister. We may fight them on the football field and on the basketball field or basketball stadium court. Thank you, I'm going field, court, stadium, something. We may do all of that there. But there's still, I wouldn't wish this jail on Midwest City. I wouldn't wish this jail on Luther, Choctaw, anywhere else. I don't want to put any other city under the bus on this one when Oklahoma City has been able to handle it thus far. Why is it all of a sudden going to be half us, half them? Why just Dell City? And that's a question that we haven't been able to answer yet. Yes, ma'am? With the old jail? We don't know. As of right now, they've said that there's economic development in the works. There is potential. We've heard every story from, what was that? High-rise apartments, new, new eateries, new shops, new things of that nature. The jail is already, you know, it's going to be sold as soon as we can make it there. We're going to bulldoze it. It's going to be an economic development boon to continue everything they're doing with all of their current projects. If that's the case, then let them find the location, if that's what they want to do. It's no different than if Dell City had to make a decision. We had to take care of a blighted area back in 2015. It cost us a fortune. We're still paying it off. But we had to do that because it was in the best interest of the city. But now's the case. Let them do that in that situation. Let them find the location. And that's the hard part is, we're not trying to throw anyone under the bus. We're not trying to pass this off on any other city. If this was any other city, their city manager would be here speaking to their constituency. It just happened to land near ours. And that's what we have to do now. And that's what's making this so difficult is, ours is the only one that continues to come back. Nobody else's has. We haven't seen them rise from the dead. If we saw seven of them come back on the list because a commissioner adds them, at least that lets us know, okay, everything is still optional. Right now, they're not saying there's any options. It's just us. Yes, sir.
Um, so, one, one thing to look at with, with the jail location, um, and the current situation downtown, I think, chief, you kind of mentioned that they've kicked out the Oklahoma County Sheriff. But when they were still doing security, I think everybody who has been around since 1991 can tell you, it still wasn't like there was a lot of safety. People still broke out of the jails. Um, and now when you don't have law enforcement overseeing that, it has gotten worse. There are two things that I think, uh, we have to look at. Um, won't get too, San Francisco, when the President of China came, or they cleaned up San Francisco to make sure it looked good for when the president came here from another country, that it looked really nice. In 2028, the Olympics will be here in the United States. The rowing teams would more than likely, Eddie River, where they train for the Olympics in the summer. And they have done for the last, oh, what have you, 12 years? Also on top of that, they are building a brand-new multipurpose stadium. For, one, the soccer team that would currently happen in 2026, the World Cup final will be in Dallas. More than likely, if we had a soccer stadium, one of the teams will more than likely practice at one of our facilities because it would be three hours away from where they were playing the final. They want to clean up their city. And they don't want to deal with the jail as the whole world will be looking at Oklahoma City within the next four years. And through 2028, Oklahoma City will have everybody all over the world either visiting here, staying here in our hotels, or participating in athletics here in Oklahoma City. here, staying here in our hotels, or participating in athletics here in Oklahoma City. They don't want the jail because of the exact same reasons that we're complaining. I know, Jada, you're saying, "If somebody breaks out." Well, it's when, right? God forbid it happens tomorrow. If they built the jail there, I'd hope it wouldn't happen tomorrow. Hope it would happen never, but it doesn't matter if it happened the day after the jail was built or 20 years. Someone will try, or someone will break out, and what's the best place to do? If you're looking for transportation, there's a neighborhood right across from you. Well, that's a free car. That's someone's car getting broken into. That's child predators getting released within a school whose kids have to walk to school. I think these are concerns that we're looking at. There is a, and I might get it from their perspective, that they're wanting to clean up their city, and this is the best way they can do it, and, but there has been a consistent basis of them putting things in near Dell City that they don't want downtown. You look at south of 44th Street, you look at everything that surrounds Dell City on the Oklahoma City side, anything they don't want, they put there. Midwest City, like you said, we fight them on the football field, we'll fight them on the court, we'll fight them with our schools, Eagles versus Bombers all the way, but you don't see Midwest City doing that to us. And you would argue they're our biggest rival, but you don't see them doing that to us, and you don't see us doing that to them. That, a whole economic pathway there on Sooner is growth from both sides, wanting to help each other, knowing that that's the best way to order to grow both of our cities, but you don't see that coming from the Oklahoma City side. And I think a lot of it has to do with the great potential that's coming to not just Oklahoma City, but Oklahoma in general, but it is on our backs in which they're putting it on and making sure it is our problem and not theirs.
One quick note, and then we'll finish with the rest of the Q and A. The one thing I want to bring up that Councilman Dean had mentioned at the last meeting that we have had about the registered sex offenders that will be in the jail from time to time, if not continually or constantly, and the item is they cannot take up residency here, there, or anywhere. Well, they said, "Well, it's not residency when you're in the jail." Well, they're there for a year. If you have somebody that breaks into one of our vacant homes and they're there for 72 hours, Kelly, it's considered residency, and we have to go through a whole eviction process and things? The law can't just work on one side of that coin, it's got to work on both, and you have registered sex offenders within walking distance, just like he said, just like Gina Standridge said, that they're going to be walking to school, and it could be as simple as that. We can't have that. That is not something that seems feasible. That's something that we're trying to question that I'm not sure that they've thought about, and that's why we're asking for these metrics. We're asking for them to do additional due diligence before they make a decision, because the decision so far just does not make sense. So please, any other questions, answers online or anything else? I do want to thank everybody really quickly. Thank you all for listening to us on this. We're all incredibly passionate about it.
Jada, can you post on our website and our Facebook page all the information as to where to send their emails and the date and the time of tomorrow and the address of tomorrow's meeting?
We will have that up by the end of the day.
And I do want to encourage as many people as possible to show up tomorrow, and Gina had a great idea, we can all wear our eagle red and white. I don't think that they expected us to put up such a big fight, and I'm just going to be, you know, as honest as possible. I really think that they don't care about this area at all. They're putting their trash over here, and it's time to let them know that we need to, we have a voice, and yes, we are real people. These are students, these are people, these are our lives. Gina said it the other day, "You're messing with people's lives." And we've got to show them that we do have a voice and that we are important.
The only question that's coming up is for those that work and are unable to attend the meeting in the morning. Again, we will post all of the information on our Facebook page by the end of the day with phone numbers, email addresses, all the information that you all need. At the very least, we do need everyone to send an email because that will be counted as public input.
I will tell you, one of the government rules that I've learned my whole life is for every one voice, that represents 10 people. Remember that whenever you're sending your one email, that you represent 10 in their mind, and the more people that we can send, 21,822 people times 10 is over 200,000 folks. I was going to do the math, but considering the basketball field comment, I'm not even going to try.
And, I mean, I don't think it would hurt to go ahead and also just start sending those messages to the Oklahoma City mayor, some of the city council members, everybody that you can. I think this is deeper than just the county commissioners.
And I do want to express the city of Dell City's appreciation to those Oklahoma City council members that have asked questions, that have raised concerns, that have had thoughts and processes and going, "Wait a minute, why is this here? Why is it not staying where it needs to be?" So we do greatly appreciate them, we do greatly appreciate the transparency that the county is trying to do, but it is time to demand more. Thank you all very much for coming.